... Come on, boss. But whenever we come out of town, we can go where people don't go. We're going to the other, um, and we do know what we want to say.
This way, I will try to change. It is time to move our business.
And for what I see is that the means power is born with images as being because...
For so many times we come to public hearing and have had a reason. Who can let them know what they want to know? They come and give advice, advice, advice. All the mothers who have been teaching is not giving them advice.
We come to bring up this and this power, we come and consultations. We get to hope that now our partner is listening to us. But when it comes to the petition execution and the battle, we don't see it close.
Because we live in a world where it's all set up in a way. Because there is more than one thing that can help. One thing I have to say.
I was told about those kind of like so before coming and feel like we pray that there's something with this.
We may not have a good time, but we must have a good time. Now, what do you think?
Uh, they is part of the person.
I'm not sure if I'm right.
They are present in the home with the most people.
Because now we want to make it happen.
Uh, when you're playing, you can make yourself into a distinction.
Oh, my, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
You see, your mother has rights, full rights to give certificates, certification for child.
I'm not sure.
But when it comes to the father, when his parents brought from somewhere and has a child, that's the child.
I'm not sure.
When the father has a certificate, qualifications for his own.
I'm not sure.
The father has to perform a first part of the process. The father has to go pay his own fees to get the certificate.
No, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Is that this?
There be the deal of way by example, I have a business mission to get the children.
It's not just a family. Oh, my, I'm not sure. It's always a boy and a girl. I'm not sure.
We don't know how to help that we have fathers and mothers that are in fight. But they don't have, we could know that they are conscious.
See, I'm not sure.
There is no way that I have a child.
That's why I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
When you want to commission, commission, what you do, that the last one is getting it.
Well, I'm not sure.
Oh, my, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Where they are.
Uh, I'm not sure.
I assume that's the other part of our plan.
This is the other one.
I believe that all of us are.
I'm not sure.
And so, because we're focused, we're sad, hard, difficult, that's what we're saying.
It's very hard.
And the problem is that I have a problem.
I'm not sure. Mama, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Children. When you're in danger, that's why I'm not sure.
But I'm not sure. If I'm not sure, that's why I'm not sure.
I like when the things that the father has, they assume that that's.
But I'm not sure. So, I'm not sure.
So, this is right.
I think it's not a second thing.
Please, they did not count because I have a sense of mind because of point.
Why? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. My life is a long, long story. It's the you.
I would. Thank you very much. Promise I will never leave you.
I miss you all.
Uh, some of the organization, I think most of the partners, I just, who can be realized to.
Some of the people here are important. I mean, I did.
Uh, but we should find that. So, who are the sections of the section that we're spoken to? But what we actually are interested in is the substitution. We could use the other one.
We have already made additions of a section. Our right to give additions to the other section. Yeah.
Do you think the issue can open? Who's having this one moment for most?
It's a lot of work. I think I'm going to do this.
Yeah, I think I need somehow, I need to prepare this system.
It's not really. I think you have a lot of energy. I don't know.
Because now it ends. You can't even reach the session. Any argument or motion.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
But if you say that, that's the business. But then it was a matter of fact.
I'm not sure.
Yes, you are. Check consciousness and also on the mind system of the same which are important. You will find over. Now, we talk with this theory and your suspect, it should be any argument of both. Let's hope it's not any argument. Now, anyone who knows that. Uh, let's check this with the mother.
So, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
And I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Even when I'm not sure.
So, now the parts in the system now are trying to take the work. It's implemented when it comes to the rights of the children. They are. The second one I think when you look at it, uh, it's not.
I'm not sure.
I wanted to do the. The second one is the.
I'm not sure.
The one that I think is the.
I'm not sure.
That's why I think I want to picture you. Say my position.
I'm not sure.
But such a thing, it must not be comfortable. Some workers, the initial cases where the child has once. But I'm sure that it's better to check on other cases.
It's not.
And we need to have good rights to the agency and other institutions. It's the quality of the children.
And. I'm not sure.
So, you. The next one is the next one is you. What do you imagine?
I'm not sure.
Just in the eye, I see that it's all right. But now, I just want to think. If we just run it, then it's another issue. Because I'm not going to be wrong. Yeah, then you'll come back. But now.
How many, how many questions have you got?
Only two. So, I can.
I'm taking the experience that I can imagine. I don't know. I can read it more than that. I can get it.
The issue of.
I'm not sure.
And also the products. I don't think also the.
The voice is. Voice is.
Okay, my. Okay, I wish to see.
I'm not sure.
I can tell you one succession.
I'm not sure.
It provides a potential. So, also, also the first and the next.
I'm not sure.
There's also that I can say to explain that it's not when you're collecting the data. It's just for us to say this is one.
I'm not sure.
Okay, I just have my. Who states the situation?
I'm not sure.
It's always a question.
I'm not sure.
Right now, the issue is that so many are there. So many are there. I was prepared that it's a question.
I'm not sure.
It's the nature of the system. Since the entire. See that too. And the section also. How's about this? It's by the one should be established. They are treated by law and the constitution and the systems. And with that, I just want to say, we are supporting this organization.
Yeah, it's a.
From.
Some. I'm not sure.
But the meditation processes to the. The minds learn of the participation model. Because this does not conflict. Also conflict as the future. They tried in the reflection. What the future, the reason is not. Can you?
I'm not sure.
As one of the. Who says that? And that is called.
I'm not sure.
This is so that they do. They're finding. Also, all the sources. Or human resources. After, uh, that and this. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. It's very good. I can see that you see every word. Can you see that with my eyes? It's going to us. The next speaker.
To me, that was a percent. You know, it's a lot. There is to go on the very, very forward and all those social men, social fathers. I get the small. Those fathers that loves and cares for the kids as if they own. Even if it's a person that has a. And my logic of that is by knowing, seeing, and doing. Or they will. I, I currently in war. I'm especially when you believe in children's act, talks about the person. That is my only. And section, this is now in. He's saying, look, this is the person and I'm not about to. It's not. I go with. It's a. I exist in the. For text, the most. I, I don't want to go for relations and now for about four years, you know. And he. Broke down six months ago. And the. A lot of them was pregnant in the town. It's a. So. You were speaking, you know, it's a. So, it's. A lot of them. Uh, since they didn't. But this. You're. You see that. We get them. Or a. I was. So, it's. I'm not. Now, just. Of course, we're. And I'm not about to. I'm not only there. I can't see it anymore. I'm just. You know, that is. Getting my. Picture twenty three example. It's a very small section. I don't believe it's enough for social officers that call me and many others. It's love and care for other kids. A lot of. And we want to. Both of us. We might. I say, oh, very. Each day we say, it's coming happy for the rest of the. So, I. To be. They go. For. I think that's. And he was. On the same. The restaurant. And why? And also about the person. I would like to see what. It won't be. Why? Why? This is. Boring. It's like. And you. Say. How my eyes can be gay? The rest of the children's. People. One. I also. Of course, this. For that, that's my point. And this to end this. Not. I'm not. I'm not. Yeah. So. Yeah. This is. This is.
This bill is not. I. No. No. Thank you. China. It's. It's. Alina. It's. I'm a. Get to a. I'm a. Informal settlement. It level. I'm anything. I'm a. And I. I'm a. I'm a. We thank you very much for coming. We have been attending a lot of these forums. Uh, they are called, they're sometimes called summits, but they don't help us with anything. Uh, speaker number two. The second speaker has said everything that I wanted to say. So, because I was already in the queue, I said, let me come. Real. But by informal settlement. We. One need. Retro. Informal settlement. We ask you, as the people from informal settlements, we are here and we will always be here. But now by informal settlement, I have not the rights. The children from informal settlements have no rights. Who. But. But. Give to. But. To learn the location. Because the people that are focused on are the people in the locations. Yes. How fit you are informal settlement by name. But one, two, three. S U. It is inspector. It is social development. It's. And also. Informal settlement. Because when the people from social development get to the informal settlement, they say they want one, two, three, which are things that we don't have in the informal settlement. Speaker number two, who will everything? Please, recopa. Informal settlement. It. You say. But you. But. For. Mementing. I'm a. I'm a. Papa. Like. Grant. She. 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 And. She. And. She. But. School. Mary. How we are the social development. I am a building plan. It ain't. Building plan. It. It. I just want to say that I'm not going to be long. I just want to appeal for your help because as the people in the informal settlements, we don't have anything. When you go to the Department of Social Development, they want you to have certain things. And where are we going to get those things when we don't have money? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you supporting the bill or not?
Yeah.
Let me check if we still have some hands.
I'm not.
One, two, you can join the line. Is there only two left? Oh, the third one here.
I'm not. Huh? Okay. I greet you.
My name is. Sorry, Mama. Sorry, little bit. Sorry, little bit. I, I just want to appeal. The issue of informal settlement. We heard about it. So, please, if it's one of the items or the issues that we are going to raise, we heard about it. Please, it's just an. Thank you. You may continue, Ma.
I'm also from Ward twenty one.
E C D forum.
The E C D forum. Nam. Informal settlements. I am also going to talk about informal settlements, but I'm going to touch briefly on some of the things that have been raised. Oh, okay. They support. You, Mama. Let me begin by saying I do support the. I hope that. Who's. Come. Now. I'm hoping that these amendments to this bill are going to help us to gain the children who are poor and who come from informal settlements are going to gain as there is amendment. It is because. We talk quite a lot about children in formal settlements because we see how much they suffer. They are suffering that. Then maybe net two weeks. Imagine how it has been raining for the past two weeks. The mets become wet. Imagine how they live, the conditions under which they live. Department of, 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 of education taking the crashes to them away from T S D. Maybe. Perhaps this migration of the E C Ds to the Department of Basic Education is going to help us. I'm not. Go. It's. I'm a sanitizer. I'm a. Perhaps. Now we do not get nothing. Perhaps this will help us because I see at schools, children even get sanitizers. We get nothing. I'm a. Our children are not safe during this time of the fourth wave of the pandemic. Oh, good. See, I have sanitizers. If people, if, if, if the department can give us sanitizers, they are a name as because the one doana are not safe. We appeal. And the teachers as well. And masks because our children are not safe and teachers are not safe. Oh, good. You. I'm not. It's. A further request of mine pertains to high schools. I'm a. We. Am. No. It's. It's. Temporal for the school. And that's. But. That's so. So. Is a temporal. Containers. Containers. Maybe if you can get those things like that. I'm a. I'm a. But they're safe. Sometimes when a school is being built, temporary shelters or containers are provided. I wonder what happens to those shelters because those would help us just so that our children can be safe. Oh, good. Furthermore. It.
And the thing that worries me the most is that these children use their father's surnames.
Imba haba ya Home Affairs hoetsabana eh eh birth certificate haba chono o o o thola tuso.
But when they go to the Department of Home Affairs to apply for birth certificates, they are not assisted.
Besenwa na uahola.
And then the child grows.
Without eh birth certificate.
Asina birth certificate.
Besi atole wa na hape.
And then those children have children.
Asina eh me asina birth certificate no wa na hape wa safar.
With the mother not having a birth certificate and then the child suffers.
Honale speaker say in Sabots ahore. Ndada otlainkakai eh chela tawisa DNA asina chela taasasibiti.
There's a speaker who asked where is a father supposed to get money to do eh DNA test when they don't have money because they are not working?
Obanu runabo me hara itza birth certificate rethola free.
Because we as mothers, when we apply for the birth certificates, we do it for free.
And analyte document everything elimo imba aska chona o thola tuso ore ayitse wa na birth certificate.
And the father would have all the documents, all the requirements, but still would not be able to apply for the birth certificate.
Ikupa department ikenelele haholo tabeni ena.
I I appeal to the department to really look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah.
Sanbonani eh ikamalamu umu polina wagamchiyako. Ngibu ya eh Tembisa eh Pumulung.
I am from Tembisa eh Pumulung.
Ngimelei eh ECD.
I'm here representing an ECD.
Eh ngihamba gune na olomchadro section ninety-one.
I suppose eh I'm here with regards to session twenty-one.
Nya isapota.
I support it.
Introduction niyam.
In my introduction.
Ntandukuluma nga eh ECD laikale kon.
I would like to talk about how an ECD started.
Eh ECD ikale ngoko kobaba antuan.
The grandmothers of the children are the ones who began the ECD.
Labe ba bega abantuana ema kamerenuwa bubalala na vukum impetinwe yuwan oritansin.
They would keep their children in their bedrooms and sleep with them in their mats.
Abazugulu na vantuana babuma keloan.
That would be their grandchildren as well as grandchildren from their neighbors' houses.
There was no formal setting at that moment.
Walunge ekwihelolmison ose tsete tsete ngalesos kats.
So therefore, mangiza gu government namshange madam chair.
Therefore, when it comes to a government today, madam chair.
Ntandukutim eh when you formalize the structure.
Ntandukutse nginkatse nbeka wixlo tsete tweni lualoluselolama ECDs.
Musanukuspuka esifunga tilendo izi ngani.
Do not pretend as if this system or structure came with you or you are the one to begin this whole system.
You copied it from the grand people, parents.
Ni bonleleko oko.
So masi formalize sa masi zeniga shesenga babukum sebisu baskalele.
Therefore, when we are formalizing it, we should not take the work away from them because they are the ones who began it.
Okay, point number one.
My first point.
Ntandukuluma nga ama lungelo womtuana ugu ti actually eh foundation.
I would like to talk about the child's right to get a foundation.
We push too hard ugu ti labantuana labe ba katoa oko. So masi bakata namshange siwa fundis.
Si pusha akulugu ti those children who have been um looked after by their grandmothers, when they come to us, we want to teach them.
Masina masi wa fundisa.
And when we teach them.
Point diam iba ekteneni each and every child has got the right to access education as early as the child is available.
My point is that inganengayi ne lungelo ugu ti thole mufundo usta usta sekale nje isha isha izi ngani ubuzigwas ungenimfundo nje ngega.
So let as a government make that for free because like in the Department of Health, batola eh access to health eh bedele ababadali.
Jangohulumeneke stoltlo konkuwente kubema hala jangasemianke nweze mbita where people are able to access health services without paying for them.
Point number two.
Poslesbe.
Mtlakubosa ngenda ba ya funding from twenty, from the year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
I would like to ask about funding from the year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
And the year we are on twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one because we are still waiting. We don't see eh as to langan last, luto last year na namshange sesalinde.
Na lo nyage swoge u twenty twenty twenty-one um ugu ti as to langan luto we did not receive anything this year as well as last year.
Point number three.
Poslesbe.
Ntela makuguti there is a possibility in your committees involve ECD to be part of those committees. So that was on jail ugu ti kuwenzagala ni ema komitini ema crash.
Nya trela ugu ti umay koninlela ugu ti ema komitini enuni bandaga nyama ECDs so that they can inform you about what is happening in the ECDs centers.
Another point.
Eli ni posu.
Nano ugu ti abantuani age abantuana ema crash.
Um it is with regards to age of the children who attend ECDs.
As government, you need to understand that the age of understanding for a child to be at the school is seven years.
Jangohulumeneke onde ugu ti ke iminyaga lapo ingane so esaylungele ukfundakona iminyaga eh iskombisa seven.
So ugu zaganja ugu ti nistachele abantuana bama five years, nama six years, niba ise ikolweni abantuana bapome ngowan. Besi ba tuali strata omtholi omunyelele strateni omunye sewi kakele, omunye sewi shanzel, konke kuwenzagala ngalesos kats.
Then how can you as government take children who are from the age of five and put them in the schools and then they will leave the schools at one? You'll find them roaming up and down the streets and they would have messed themselves up.
The other point is please take consideration to that eh ECD people, we are automatically government employees.
Ogu yasalitpeye ugu ti jangabasebezba ma ECDs siyibasebezba hulumeneke ngokse nseke.
So we are also asking for a subsidized training from a recognized institution eh so kavara oh those old grannies and non-educated people. Ya understand ugu ti there are EFTs, there are colleges, there are universities. But makube konalezo keitara our age of fifty or fifty-five so that si thola enough training ugu ti siyo implement in our centers.
Nya trela ge ugu ti.
A second, says Polina.
Na kpeno lelo stretre shansha wanasensha ma ECD centers. Iga kulgasa understand that there are FDTs, there are universities um where people can go and get training. But could there be a special type of training provided for the grandmothers who are above the age of fifty so that they can be trained? Besi bahame bayo kalisaloka baka kaka shebe la paya eh iskongwe neva kuswantana ugoz. Is my time over chair?
Long ago, it's only that I was waiting for her to to finish.
Besenwendenche.
But you can submit that if you still have something.
Oma kolona ko unga kambisa lela dafu.
Thank you so much, darling.
Greetings eh chair.
Tholaka ki Moronga Akhoppo. From ward seventy under sector ya wood committee of health and social development.
My name is Moronga Akhoppozo. I'm coming from another health sector of social. Yeah, from the world committee of the health and social development, Moronga Akhoppo is my name.
Uh I I'd like to support the amendment bill.
Kirata khodkalosa horaki amo chela muala komo o o umamekele trey.
Eh mostly I like to say about the clause ten.
Me kirata hugua chata fanofaka muala wa na ten.
Yeah, and the parental responsibilities.
So yone ibua kama ikarabe lo abatadi.
Eh mostly on the wards, we mostly face the challenges, rekopa nalidi challenges te ko te fapa fapani.
Eh hansesese dira khang eh in our wards, we eh are face-to-face with a lot of challenges, different ones.
Mo ilonchore kana ko engwa othola ndate ajula leban.
So much so that sometimes you find a father living with the children.
And eh me alite ngi apela ajula samue.
And finding that the mother is actually around, she's still alive, but she lives somewhere else.
And eh utwe chale eh kati abana ya grant.
And then he.
Ajula that separates we.
And then he is having in his possession the card for the children's grant's money and he is living away from the family.
Utweri edipatikilasabana.
He's got children's particulars.
Kati sabana ta kliniki ngi dikoyena.
And then eh he's got children's particulars such as the certificates and also the clinic cards for the children are with him.
Probably kenla hori hara limo this eh setting erelinkoyon. Twanze baneli relationship within the clinics and social workers and all the departments around facing eh utweluan tanang leban.
And this is simply because in the sector where we are, it seems like we have to have some relationships between the clinics eh the social development and all the areas that are actually looking after the interests of the children.
Hora banaba chono chotola access to wherever if it's a vaccination day yabona or visited day yatliniki nguhoro chono choba felichizareba is.
So that these children can actually eh have their privileges. For example, if it is on the day of their vaccination, they should be exposed to that. Or even when it's their day for visitation, that should also be be provided to them.
Enkutisambo choko haholo it's our social workers.
What helps me the most is our social workers.
Social workers sarona even though re re kenyadi itli tibo obona.
When we lodge our complaints eh to our social workers.
Eh itaring eh the the cases eh eh it's eh maybe run about a year. Mo ilonchore ndate twanze atole access ya hori twanze a benefit whatever sabana baxache. Kabanele ana kilelo kula banu ujula leban.
So I don't know really what to say, but what happens is that the case could take maybe the process that mounts up to about a year for the father to also have some benefits that are related to the children because these are also his children after all.
Ha neke hola neke zebahore social worker immediately ha chonalidi challenges itesok. Neba itlaba visitat the different places. Ba shebe mo wa na ajula ba shebe limo eh me ajula nguti nchore. The problem emoga between bonavalit.
In the days gone by, when I was still growing, I knew that when there was a situation like this, immediately the social workers will actually pay a visit, they will come actually to both places um different ones, as I have already mentioned the situation in the beginning, for them to be able to see the conditions, living arrangements in both places to see exactly what is appropriate, what is not appropriate.
And there no problem ikuhori. Haleheba toti the challenges within, they don't address it. They just take it and sit on top of it. And eh mo ilonchore you don't know where you go oyapeli kapo oyamraku. Oute bi bileni the the family si di lahwen. It seems like you were nahawe timsebitwa hau.
Jano serese bo ne elebo chata ke hora haba fi chakanano nyana. They find a problem, that is the social workers. They assess the problem, they just sit on top of it, they are not doing anything about it. Now the next thing is that the parents come to you, they lodge their complaints on you and things are not happening now. It seems as if we are the ones who are not doing our job.
Kelebo reketla ngala tzedin fatke tadi submit.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Some of them in down in writing and then I will submerge them.
I do believe that we are. I was just to say a word that we are done, but I can see one hand that side. It's like some were provoked by the speakers. But we need also to consider time. I will allow only hands that are coming about new things. Not to come and tell us about what has already been said. And when we start, I said I will be giving each one of you five minutes, but I was giving you ten minutes.
Five minutes.
And still you are not complying. It's past twelve now. There are social workers, there is the department, there are honorable members who are still going to say something. It's almost about two hours in this hall. So please, I'm going to give you the order, but stick to your five minutes. Please, please. I've seen one hand that side, two at the back, three, four. Can you please come? I've recognized four hands. You can start say.
Eh morning everyone. Eh my name is Lim Dagane. I'm from, I'm from Devitin, ward sixty-nine.
Sanbonani sugai Devitin ward sixty-nine.
Eh ne bonje liwa nibalea akul.
I've got one very important point.
Eh lipes ugu ti eh if you can check abantuana sesbanikilte akul especially our parents.
Um eh eh as parents, we've messed up our kids for a long time.
Mongape akul when it comes to eh sports.
Especially when it comes to sporting codes.
Nowadays, we don't deliver that much abantuana when it comes to sports.
We no longer deliver sport to our children, not any longer.
I think it's very important if maybe the social department can make a bill abantuana.
I'm 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 quite grateful for social development to come up with this proposed bill for our children.
It really like every month if umtuana you can see there's a certain budget email I told umtuana for any tripping millions eh containing esports for umchan umtuana.
I propose a monthly budget eh for for our children eh to help them do sporting, different sporting codes.
Because monga chaka my parents, they do their own budget for alcohol every month.
Because if you look at the parents, they have their budget for alcohol and booze every month.
But there's no budget for umtuana for the sports in the early childhood.
Yet there is no budget for our our children to do sports, especially in the ECDs when they are early childhood.
I thank you.
Yabonga.
Okay, thank you. Morning to everyone.
You can take your mask say for you to be for you to be audible, please.
Sanbonani, okay.
Eh morning to everyone in the卡拉 read the panel, madam chair.
Yebengeleli panel stalo.
But I think mine is to be short.
Oku amjukuti ngibemfishana.
Is to say, my name is Deboho Bungeni.
Kamalamu Deboho Bungeni.
I'm a zonal coordinator of Sangko eh Chavosa.
You coordinator.
I'm representing Sangko eh Chavosa.
Ngemeli Sangko.
Eh I must apologize I arrived later, but on my way coming here, I was also delayed at the door because of your machine that is not working properly.
Ogu zawa. There is an interpreter. Can you please talk and give him a a chance to interpret because we can't hear you.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Eh I'm 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 gonna just be simple chapisen to say as much as we are supporting the bill.
Nomasusapera susagela.
Haven't gone through this bill eh we've seen something that is so critical to us as poor people.
Omasi bogalepilis.
And eh which is repeated repeatedly eh to this bill.
Yeah, pinda pind.
Section forty-nine.
Jango section forty-nine.
Section forty-nine. Demediation by a family advocate. As a Sangko, we want to propose a suitable practitioner to be provided as voluntarily to any case and stop hiring eh lawyers eh as lawyers as representative for the families.
Ogunke nelela we family advocate.
The reason I'm saying I'm not gonna come out this color without mentioning this bill, it it might happen that have been. Okay, okay, okay.
Sibonunke nelela we family advocate umeli law we we mindeni kuzinlego is ngolu.
We want to propose that.
Sifisa uka paramise.
Whenever there is a mediation to the family.
Jalo uma godot usana imindeni.
The government eh must make sure that they allow the people of voluntarily so to this for argument sake.
Oh humenaga concept.
You find one of the families is a social worker.
Eh.
Eh that can support the professional practitioner without having us consulting eh advocate from outside who might cost us because what you have discovered is street committee members. Many time eh some of the issues that need to be resolved and mediated to the society, they only require somebody with expertise from the family without going to the judicial system and legally.
Yes.
Can you, can you please allow the interpreter to interpret? Please.
Thank you so much, chair. Sibonili jenga malunga omparat ugu ti uholanda ah 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 abameli na nama family advocates kuba zinlego es ngolu es trina zenza bantabaninga bati ngusizo bangasagali. Kantius kunama social worker kunabanta bakonempakatin abanganke nelela ngonge inkokele uksiza limden.
Eh section seven eh section seventy-eight.
Section seventy-eight.
We propose ward councilors and street committees to be party being for approval of budget in such declared ward.
Siya paramis ugu ti ma watini ama ward committees nama komitia konempakatin abe inkaenyi uma kukuti ngidwa indabazezabelozma le zalom pakatapatala ku yabanda.
Eh ripping, it is because you you find the official come from higher authority from province without knowing exactly the core factors to the ward.
Esisa tuse tusezogona umoholi ovela kuis fundazwe nomovela kuzwellonke eh so wenapa abe izinda bazompakat enga zazagale ugu ti ingo kakak eh ugu ti imtatiya konai hamba ganja.
So we are saying on that level and capacity, we want the inclusive of our stakeholders. Might be those NPOs around NGOs. So that our submission.
Makositukuhulu konempakatin.
You can now round off.
Awabe yingaenyi yesabelozma ne ngongo ezimangi eh itatwa ngompakati. Sunga kota.
No eh I am finished chapisen eh I believe that we're going to submit eh to the secretary of your committee some of our submissions.
Seni kubile stalo ogonyo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Sizogechula no gu 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 nopala we committee.
Itumelenka feela.
Greetings all.
Tholaka ki Itumelenkwa hapukuta.
My name is Itumelenkwa Pukuta.
Uh I stand here for ECD sector.
Keeme mona bakensadi ECD center.
Saka chapisen kihu hadela um intervention eh rekupang bakensabana with the municipality bylaws.
I want to emphasize our request for child in intervention with children's eh bylaws with the municipalities.
Di di batla di rechatza hahulu ibile di di resitisa huhudisengbana kaneti leka respect because diar hadela hahulu hulu. So um my biggest concern.
These bylaws um are very, they pressurize us a lot and they disrupt the way we want to raise our children. They really interfere with the what we are trying to do.
Re kete la ribona hala mashong ah hurumende rilebatu basabatlingu comply.
We end up looking to the government as people who do not want to comply.
Bad kete langba operator illegal.
Who end up operating illegally.
Because milao echenwa husache biwihore hara chinchamila. We already have bana in our space as ECDs.
Because the laws are changed without taking into consideration that we already have children in our ECDs.
And milao hai chinchwa kutwa de kopani today, yanakharo kopani mo.
And when the laws are changed, you find that the meeting is happening today as we are gathered here today.
Kola osochinchilwe kutuha kana ko ewu li expected hori beseli complya le milao yamaspaala.
And then the law is changed from that point and we are just expected to start complying with that law.
That's when funding becomes the main issue in the space. Kimoting eh klo koyachaleti ibang butata wobuhu. Another concern that we have is redula redla to the settings, especially to the summits in the ECD space. Butata wobongbo renan lukonakore redula redla dikopano. Zee 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 amanani lila batadi ECD. Re lhi seditli tibo zarona le matwenyehu in the running of the centers.
We bring up our issues and concerns eh in relation to the running of the ECDs.
Kete long ibeka rikilehu di talk shows because nothing changes after that.
Kete at the end, you find that it's like we are attending a talk show vanhaunale thulezalan kamera mogen.
So opoyaka today kihore, whatever implementations and amendments that we are pleading for.
So my request is that whatever changes or di petwo di fika padifi zehu redikopanmuna kajeno.
Can we please get assurance yahora something, communication itlabateng to say our cries are taken into consideration. Re kupa ova oru lerifene tifaleso ya hori di nthuetere di willing letla bu letla chutela horo nakatonah le ribonse le rejuete hori na huetalan ketsiwa hobona hori di nthuetere di buanglia di mamela la di u. Because. So shetza rediyeza ngriyeza le ratong le huhudisengbana bama Africa.
Because everything that we do, we are doing in relation to the raising of our children with love and care.
Yalebu.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bingele. Eh ikamangimu chuli zwane.
My name is Tuliswane.
Ngibu ya name gu ECD sector.
I also come from the ECD sector.
Seka begile gonke speaker lisbespambiwa.
The previous speaker has already said it all.
Eh chengtenzo kalanga yo eh this compliance kakulu kakulu ya sitindezela.
I am going to uh express concern about this compliance. It is re it really puts us under pressure.
Ngina twenty-two years ngbeka abantuana endinga batanda.
I have looked after children for twenty-two years and I truly love them.
Gotwa ama bylaws jangobis speaker seka begile bayasitindezela enegu kishwa imali esineni esingazugu ti zipoma ziyapi because asina zotina nalezo imali.
I find that the bylaws are really oppressive to us and furthermore, we are being asked to pay monies time and again and we don't really know. and we don't really know what these monies are for.
Social workers, health department, eh, city council, city town.
What concerns me the most is that when you go to different places like eh.
Government officials.
Different government officials, they all send you to one place. They work in the same place and they work together, but they all treat you as if they work separately and they send you somewhere else. Please ensure that they interact with us, they come to us, they eh look at what we have and what we need and that we work together eh in terms of this compliance. Another point that I would like to raise. We were asked to fill in many forms last year eh, we were promised that we were going to be eh assisted eh through Covid, but we got none of that assistance. Us and the children received none of this assistance. And then I have a request. When eh a budget is put together, there is provision made for children. May I request that each ECD receive supplies, eh food supplies apart from funding.
And then lastly. Five-year-olds abekori for school.
Five-year-olds are not ready to go to school. We are the ones who look after children and yet you overlook us and you go ahead and make rules saying that children should go to school.
Five-year-olds belongs to the crash.
Eh, five-year-olds should be going to. The children should be six years old when they attend formal schooling. We are gathered here today because we have in common the, the, eh, the, the needs of children. But what I find is that we are oppressing the child. Thank you.
I support the bill.
I support the bill.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Eh, we're going to do it this way. There are some of the issues that has been raised here. Eh, the issues are not falling under the Department of Social Development. Or does it form any part of the children's amendment bill that we are here for? The issues raised that falls under the Department of Education. Some for home affairs. Some to the municipality or cocteau or human settlement. So our officials will make sure that eh that information is to be taken to the relevant department or institution. But the ones that has been raised for social development, the social workers are here, the department is here and members of the portfolio committee are here. Can I get four social workers to come to the phone? To come and respond to the issues that has been raised here. You also need to, to, to indicate where your offices are. I've seen people raising hands that side to say they are social workers.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and good afternoon, honorable members in the community. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Matlojonolosibubela from National TSD.
Sorry, sorry, can I get social workers that are operating from the local offices or the regional office before the national department? Those that are located here. You'll come later, I said I need social workers now. Can you start with your name and where your offices are situated, then you respond to the issues that has been raised here.
My name is Figiswa.
Speak to the mic, please.
I work in the Germanist office as a social worker. It is true that it is very difficult eh the providing of funding to informal settlements.
And also registration ina gombi due to ama bylaws.
Eh, so it is also difficult the registration because of the bylaws especially.
And yes, it is true, kuti abantuana, they are already existing in non-compliant eh settlements.
Eh, it is also true that there are children eh eh existing eh in, 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 in settlements that are not complying.
One also of the major issue esiba now, when we are intervening is ama political dynamics within these areas.
Can, can you repeat the statement?
Political dynamics.
What, what is happening with political dynamics?
Eh, la otu kuti kona eh abandon abab belong eh into certain parties eh then you oh you, you cannot actually work with other people who do not belong to a certain party.
I think the table is interested on that part. Can you come up clearly to say this, this is what is happening here? Don't rush.
Eh, I will use eh the area of Umakawase because that is the area where we have attempted eh to provide service delivery in there.
Interpreter, please, you must also assist. If she's not raising her voice, you must also raise your voice because we need to get some of the issues. Thanks. Akawase area, yes?
Whereby, when you work with the members of the community, then you will do an entry and have the buy-in from the community. Then you will find that in other areas, it is eh predominantly eh Ruby and opposing party that is in another area and then people with belonging to these different parties, they cannot come together and agree on issues for the sake of the communities. Eh, it department has eh made attempt to bring in a mobile unit eh or a toy library at the area just to cater for the children in the area because yes, it is true, the areas are not eh registerable. Anya indo because of some of the eh community members understanding.
It's, it's like I'm lost. Political dynamics, then issues of toys.
Political dynamic eh, what I'm trying to explain here is.
And what type of a meetings that you are calling and you, you are not finding support eh then you end up realizing that you have, you don't get that support simply because of the political because I, I want to get it clearly, whether it's politicians who are coming there to disturb. It's an individual who is saying you don't have to do this because I belong to this party or what? It needs to be clear.
I wouldn't explain as if it is the parties or the members of the parties, but it will be certain individuals. Then that would hinder the progress or the intervention that the government officials are trying to render or the services that the government official are trying to bring in the community.
Can I get the name of your, your supervisor in that term? And the number?
My name of the supervisor is Mrs. De Brain.
Mrs. De Brain.
Adele De Brain.
The number?
Eh, it is zero one one eight two zero zero three nine six.
Don't be too fast. We need to get that clearly.
Okay, zero one one eight two zero zero three nine six.
Zero three nine six.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay, now I can move on to the toy library and the mobile ECD. These are services that the department have envisaged eh to try and assist. Eh, the communities, our communities in unregatable areas. So eh na, we call them non-center based eh services. And then I'll answer questions that the chair has for me to clarify.
I'm going to stop there and I'm going to answer any questions.
You said you want to answer what? Questions from myself?
If the chair has more eh questions that want me to clarify for the community.
Now, I, I will talk to your, your principals because I thought you are seated there taking any information that the people will be raising here for you to respond. Not to get questions from me or from this table, but to respond to the members. They were raising issues that are happening here. But I'm not going to waste eh, to waste any time because I have seen that you were there but it's like you were not listening to all the issues that they were raised with people here. And that shows exactly what is happening on the ground. Thank you. The next social worker.
Good day, greetings.
Eh, Kamala Mutivo Mathosi, I'm a state of service worker. I'm here to respond on the client that was talking about the fifty thousand issue that was needed by the lawyers. A process, yeah, access, the client, the biological father or the mother went to court and then the court will send the, in the, the application to the social worker and then the social worker mediate. If there is a lawyer, the client decides to look for a lawyer. In the issue of access, the client.
And if.
He, he chose his client, utufuna il lawyer, utizumele because the social worker is there to protect the child in court. We look at the best interest of the child in terms of section seven. The other client was talking about the child, it seems as the child was placed under her care according to section twenty-three. And then he said, according to the act. Everything is talking about the parents. When we are saying about the parent, you can have, you can be a parent, adoptive, foster parent or caregiver. And then the social worker, if he decide out umtana, uflahasela bani or agavashes siali bani, see check out the section seven ama best interest of the child, I'm not sure. And then. And then the social worker drew a parenting plan. A parenting plan, equal ma ngama parties, if you are parties, you are not only a parent, anyone can be a caregiver to the child. Thank you. Eh, eli wizalaka kinnan take you quickly from the Department of Social Development. Eh, kinekito kupachapason hori, kibueka, kirispondeka, issue study ECDs and then ki, ki indicator hori. And then give indicator for it?
That the ECDs have problems and we agree with that.
And then...
There are some steps that we have taken as the department. As like we have been talking to you through summits.
But finally, another level in there, where they're gonna go on.
But there's another level that we are working with.
Like...
Such as the intergovernmental relations. Which is done by the MMCs and the MAC in the municipalities. So that the issues of the ECDs are more user-friendly to the ECDs no matter where they are operating from.
And then the other thing, happy, happy, for it. The very same process, he look over the Khauten Portfolio Committee for Social Development and, yeah, Social Sector.
The very same process was taken to the Khauten...
Khauten? Portfolio Committee for Social Sector. Yes, for Social Development. More long for it, the issue of the bylaws, it's all the municipalities in the province.
Were the issues of the municipalities in the entire province?
For it, but the... But the shebe sister and the municipalities were called in. For it, but the share and like, but the back more community in Zaroona.
So that the municipalities could review them and then take feedback to the communities. So from that, we can say to the communities that we have taken account of your issues and we will come back to you after we have had these summits and forums to update you on what is going on. And on the issue of PPEs where the ECDs submitted forms but have not received the PPE, I request you to meet me after this meeting and we will see how we can help you further.
It's happy, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Chairperson, honorable members of the Portfolio Committee for Social Development and honorable guests. My name is Dibelo Mkonto, I'm from the Department of Social Development. I'm based at the Provincial Office of the Department of Social Development.
Greetings to the Chairperson and the members of parliament and to everyone in the house. My name is Dibelo.
Mkonto.
Mkonto, and I'm from the Department of Social Development.
Yes, I'm based at the Provincial Office.
At the Provincial Office.
Is responsible for welfare services. Chairperson, we have noted all the concerns that have been raised. Okay, maybe I will just try to go through because my colleagues already responded. I'm touching on the areas where I felt maybe that I need to expand it more. Okay, let me start with the second person from who raised the concern, men no kuluuna, about the fact that the MAC is raising and emphasizing that the MAC must support the ECDs. Okay, the MAC for Social Development supports financially 1.6, 1,621 early childhood development centers.
MAC of... The ECD center say 1,621?
21.
1,621.
So this is half of the NPOs that are funded by the department. All in all, we fund 2.4 nonprofit organizations and 1.6 of this belongs to the early childhood development centers. 2004. Nonprofit organization.
2004 NPOs.
So I just wanted to highlight that, that indeed we are funding, we are supporting the ECDs even though they are going to be migrated to the Department of Education. We are putting a process in place to ensure that they do not suffer. So we are going to have a special dispensation to sign service level agreements with them before they are transferred to the Department of Education on the 1st of April. Men no kuluuna, who will have a reason, issue the list of undocumented children that are in the, you know, the informal settlement where she's living.
Honorable man who spoke about the list of undocumented children who stay in the informal settlement where she stays.
Pedro Kopa, men no kuluuna, for it, that list because we've got at provincial level a forum for undocumented, that deals with undocumented minors. So, Kopa, we cooperate with the social workers after this so that we can get that list and see how best we can assist as the Department of Social Development. Me, Alina Ramaphosa, informal settlement. We raised a lot of issues about compliance. Tako Hamasbala, we have noted those issues.
Me, Alina Ramaphosa also raised a couple of issues about compliance and we have also noted those issues.
One of my colleagues already mentioned, we've got different structures here that deals with issue of compliance, that ECDs. We are aware of those issues, they have been escalated even to SAGA. I think all the ECDs issues of compliance, we even had went to the extent of having regional summits where we sat with different municipalities to talk about all the challenges affecting the early childhood development. Okay, Honorable, Akisale Shorke, me, Paulina Mtiago, who talks about the Wako Tembisa, she did not receive funding from 1920 to 2021, they did not get any funding from the department.
There is a lady from Tembisa, Paulina, who spoke about the fact that they had not received funding from 1999 to 2000?
Financial year, 192019, 2020, and 2020 and 2021.
Financial years, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021.
Pedro Kopa, I cooperate later, not happy because there are reasons why funding is suspended. You know, it might be, maybe there were issues of compliance with the service level agreement that we signed with the nonprofit organizations.
I'm going to ask her to please meet with me after this because there are reasons why funding has been suspended and it might have been an issue of compliance or issues with the service level agreements that they signed with the ECDs.
The suspension of funding, is it for each and every ECD or those that are not complying?
Chair, it's the suspension, it's for ECDs and any other NPO that we are funding that do not comply with the prescripts of the service level agreements and also governance-related issues. Because if we fund... Okay, because...
Can I check something? Those that are complying, when you turn their applications back, are they being told as to how are they going to be assisted? Or is there any team from DSD that are assisting in making sure that they end up complying?
Yes, chair. We've got monitoring and evaluation officials that work with organizations, NPOs, including the early childhood development centers because they are also registered as NPO that deal with the issues of compliance. They will check on the SLA, we indicate things that they need to submit, like you need to submit a six-monthly report. You cannot use the money, for example, to withdraw it, you use it, cash and all that. So we look at the statement.
But since 2019, 2020, today is 2021. They didn't get that explanation.
That's why, Chair, I'm saying, if we can get to this matter in particular so that we can get to the bottom of this to check, for it. Obviously, funding was suspended in 1920 and it means...
In 1920.
I mean, 2019. Funding was submitted, sorry about that. Sorry about that, Chair. Sorry, the funding was suspended during the financial year 2019, 2020. So obviously, it means that they still failed to comply in the next financial year, which was 2020, 2021. That's why they were not funded for two consecutive financial years. Hence, I'm saying, after this, if we can get the details and check what are the issues that led to their suspension of funding.
And I think this table is interested in getting that response. We want to get it. You can explain to them, but we also need to get that response.
The response will be provided, Chair.
Thank you, Madali. You still have something to say before I give to the National Department?
Okay, we have also, the last thing I think that I have is about the issues of response from social workers and the fact that it was raised by Miss Morongwa Hopot, Hopot, who said that there are social workers that are taking too long to respond to their issues? Okay, on that one, I want to say that social workers have supervisors, Chair. That's why you even, I know that you even said who's your supervisor and all that. There is also a regional director. So if maybe there is no response from the social workers, there are other levels that, you know, the metas can be taken up so that we can assist. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, National Department. Can you, can you please also indicate as to how are you going to deal with the issue of ward 21 as an informal settlement? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Chair, there was an issue I thought the ECD coordinator would address. I'm not quite sure how to address the issue of the ECD stimulus package with field workers that go to ECDs and they are not identifiable. I'll respond to the issue of ECD migration to the Department of Basic Education. There shouldn't be that much anxiety for the over-50s because they will be taken as they are to the Department of Basic Education.
For over-50s, you said?
Yes, practitioners, ECD practitioners over 50. The lady from ward 21 indicated that there is a father who's not able to register the birth of the child. I'll start with that first issue. Fathers have a right to register the births of their children. Without DNA, if they are the real fathers, the birth fathers, the biological fathers. If the mother can confirm that this is the real father. But in situations where the father is not known, was never known to the family and the mother is not there to confirm. There is where DNA would be required. The second issue that was raised from ward 21 is the issue of the father who is the primary caregiver of the children. And the SASSA cut is with the mother who's not the primary caregiver. The community should know that fathers can also apply for child support grant. If they are primary caregivers. If a primary caregiver does not use this grant to the benefit of the child, they should be reported to SASSA.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I guess the area social worker has the SASSA contact details, unfortunately.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
What I have is the Department of Home Affairs contact details for those fathers who struggle to register the births of their children.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
The contact person is.
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry.
The contact number is zero one one.
Zero one one.
Four three seven.
Four three seven.
One six zero two.
One six zero two.
The cell number is zero seven one.
Cell number zero seven one.
Three five zero.
Three five zero.
Zero nine zero six.
Zero nine zero six.
Honorable Chair, I would like to urge the community leaders.
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry.
I would like to encourage community leaders.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm sorry.
Because in every district, in every province, in every locality, there should be a child care protection forum.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 Uh, I'm sorry.
Where all ECD coordinators, government departments, NPOs, SANKA, NGOs, they come together and discuss challenges pertaining to child care protection.
Uh, I'm sorry. NGOs, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and honorable members.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to give the the opportunity to the honorable members. Um, I'll be starting from my right today.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Please, um, it's nine minutes past one now.
Uh, it's nine minutes after one, man.
I hope at nine thirty we'll be out of this place.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I believe I'm talking to honorable members.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Over to you, honorable member.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I will be very brief, but just to say thank you very much to everyone that came out today. Our job as the Portfolio Committee of Social Development is to come and listen to your concerns and to take these inputs that you have given us back to Parliament to amend.
Uh, I'm sorry.
To amend the legislation in order for your issues to be addressed.
Uh, I'm sorry.
So I think the issues that the fathers raised in terms of access to children that are not their biological children or even just access to their own children is something that we take very seriously.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
I also want to say the the reoccurring concern with regards to the effectiveness of social workers is also a big concern for me.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Social workers are in communities to serve community members and to address their social ills. And if they do not want to be responsive to your needs, you need to be able to report them to to their managers or to social development.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
And then I heard the issues around the birth certificates, the issues with regard to the undocumented migrants as well as the DNA tests.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Um, and I also serve on the Portfolio Committee of Home Affairs, so I'll be taking these issues to the Minister of Home Affairs when I go back to Parliament.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
See, I'm sorry.
We thank you so very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Um, I also would like to thank um the community of this area for having come through today.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
As this uh process is part of a bigger one.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Your contributions are going to make it possible for both Parliament and the committee to go on with the process of amending the bill to to deal with the issue of foster care. Uh, that was the reason for this bill to be amended in the first place.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 Uh, I'm sorry.
It has been very encouraging to hear that wherever we have been, some issues are at the forefront of the concerns that are being made.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Which means that the amendment bill is touching on the very sensitive issues that need to be uh to be sorted out.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
May I join my colleagues by saying that we will make sure that the entire process is deliberated upon so that at the end of the day, the.
Uh, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, I I rise to thank you.
Okay. Honorable members. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Uh, I'm sorry.
And also let me take this opportunity to thank the community of Ramaphosa and Magaus.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I know exactly what are you talking about.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was once deployed in what twenty one Magausu as a counselor.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I know what you're talking about.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, to social workers?
Uh, go social worker. Oh, sorry.
It's clear that there are challenges in the community.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You have answered so well.
Uh, I'm sorry.
But the unfortunate part is the community doesn't have this information.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The issue of funding.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You said there's a team of monitoring and evaluation.
Uh, I'm sorry.
And I think if they knew about about it, they shouldn't have raised it here.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Can you assist the community?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Can you please assist the community?
Uh, I'm sorry.
They are so frustrated.
Uh, I'm sorry.
And they can't wait for Parliament to come here to raise issues.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We have the department in Eguruleni DSD.
Uh, I'm sorry.
We have social workers.
Uh, I'm sorry.
So please assist the communities.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Also, the issue of political dynamics.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I really don't understand the social worker who spoke about it.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Because if that was the case, you needed the intervention.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So please, social workers, do justice to the community.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I know some of the issues.
Uh, I'm sorry.
You are resolving them.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I know because I was part of your team.
Uh, I'm sorry.
But if majority of our people are not satisfied, it means something is not right.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, social worker, the one who was talking about political dynamics?
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, if the chairperson, they didn't want further questions, answers from you, I don't think you should have clarified the way you'd clarified.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Next time when you come to.
I'm sorry.
Next time when you come to such gatherings, the public hearing.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Please, come prepared.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Don't undermine the wisdom of the community.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There are challenges.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I heard one of the social workers said they will be behind with the community.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I'll repeat yourself, please, sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Uh, uh, she said they will remain behind with the community. Uh, I'm sorry.
As an oversight committee of social development?
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Will follow up the issues.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your productive engagement.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Honorable workers. Chairperson, I I won't be long and I will take your instruction.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I want to just say thank you for the submissions that was made here.
I'd like to thank you, Sevri, and the others that came out today.
Um, there is definitely a need for us to um to emphasize again the migration from basic edu- from social development to um basic education, that migration uh and the implication, especially on the informal ECD sector.
It is important for us to be clear that the migration is. On.
The the migration from the from uh of the ECD from social development to to basic education.
From the social development.
That that um awareness, the implication, I'm sorry, of that needs to be needs to be worked out with communities.
And the implication of that must be worked out in the community.
And we have been hearing this now um in this public hearing. So again, I I would say as a as a committee, we are hearing communities and especially our informal um ECD sector saying to us that.
And it is a difficult to hear. And we would like for the future development to say.
That that they need, they need, they their their needs needs to be recognized and um and heard.
And they are required to be heard.
Then I just want to say to the community lastly, there is an aspect where the social worker that has spoken here.
I would like to say to the community lastly. There is an aspect of what the social workers say.
That I want to ask the community to support our social workers.
And we would like to say to the community.
Because they work under very difficult circumstances.
And they work under very difficult circumstances.
And the issue of political interference.
And the question of political intervention.
I my colleagues has highlighted uh what we wanted to hear, but I want to just say to the community, we need to also own our services that we need and not allow politics and politicians to use our communities as playgrounds.
And I can't say that we should do that. We should do that. We can't let the politicians intervene. And we should use it as a playground.
And I I'm I'm mentioning it in the area of services to communities so that it not be disrupted.
And this is specific. With regard to the community, this can't be ignored.
So thank you, um God bless you.
I'd like to thank you and good to see you.
Honorable Opperman.
I'm sorry, Opperman.
Thank you, Chairperson. I want to thank you for your contributions and inputs here today.
I would like to thank you for your contributions and inputs here today.
Archaic legislation and legislative provisions that perpetuates and promotes that undermines the importance of the role of fathers in the lives of their children must be amended.
There must be archaic instructions. For the archaic teaching. But the rights of biological fathers and for all fathers. And we should speak.
To amend these archaic legislative provisions is the only way we will bring about social change, how we perceive men as fathers and dismantle the narrow construct of fatherhood in South Africa. I thank you for your valuable contributions.
I would like to thank you for your wonderful contribution today. And your archaic teachings and teachings for others. So we can see the narrative of our fathers and the role of fathers in our land. And we should speak. Bye, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, my colleagues have already touched on some of the points that I would have liked to mention. Um, state of South African fathers.
The stance of South Africans of fathers.
Forty one percent of children are co-residents with men who's not their biological fathers. Inenfia 41% of children are co-residents with men who's not their biological fathers. Fathers must not only be seen as material providers. Fathers must not only be seen as material providers. Fathers must be seen as material providers, physical and emotionally, they need to be present in the children's lives. Because there's two types of fathers, is the biological father and the legal father. The biological father is the person what betroken is in the kind of upbringing. The legal father is the person who is involved in the child's upbringing. And the biological father is the contributor of genetic makeup. And the law don't acknowledge the legal father because the legal father is the one that was physically, emotionally and materially present in the child's life. And I think it's our role as lawmakers. It is our responsibility to look into that. To look at it. I think in all the public hearings, we did hear this thing of where fathers must go for DNA tests to prove they're bi- that they are the biological father of children. This is a serious problem. Because the system fails fathers, unemployed fathers. And it deprives children to be acknowledged as citizens of this country because they are undocumented. So therefore we need to look at assistance for DNA tests for fathers, thank you. Thank you very much, honorable members. And thank you very much to everyone in this hall. The committee is so humbled by your commitment. And your participation. We want to thank you. You spend a lot of your time today with us. This committee knows very well that you were having something to do in your different families. That's what makes this committee to feel so humbled. Some were supposed to go to church to praise the Lord. To thank him for his protection. Because I do believe that we are here not because we are intelligent. Not because we are good enough. But it's only God's grace upon ourselves. So we do have the reason of thanking him. On our closing, I would love to call upon the pastor again. As we are to leave as yourselves and members to our different provinces. We need God's protection. So can you please Ma, come to the fore? And pray for us. And thank you very much. May the Lord God continue to bless all of you. Thank you very much. Sorry, 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 sorry. Can you please wait for a while? Yes, all of, all of you please. There's something that they want to give to you. Thank you very much.